Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of January 4th, 2024. Please, Ethan, if you could, please call the roll.
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance before that?
Our agenda is backwards, so we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance first.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) United States of America, in surrendering public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we can call the roll.
President Pollock.
Here.
President Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Trustee Galagos.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Attorney Pickrell.
Here.
Also present Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum. First off, on our agenda is a president's report. Several items I wanted to address. First of all, for the trustees, you'll notice, as I let you know before the holidays, we kind of rearranged the room. Our goal is to get better video presentation opportunities in the room. If trustees want to give me some feedback after the meeting in coming days, I'd welcome that. Again, we'll, if this arrangement works, we will work on better technologies to improve our ability to show the agenda and to make presentations, audio/video presentations. The first item on my president's report is I wanted to acknowledge the National Historic Landmark Designation update that the village recently received. The Village of Riverside was designated as a national historic landmark by the U.S. Department of Interior in 1970. The district encompassed the majority of the village's municipal boundaries. And beginning in 2008, the village began the process of updating our historic landmark designation boundary to include all of Riverside. After many years of work, on December 13th, 2023, the Secretary of the Interior approved an update to Riverside's National Historic Landmark Designation. This update includes an increase in the village's landmark boundary to incorporate the area west of First Avenue bounded by, on the north, by Ridge Wood Road, and on the west by Gulf Road. I would like to acknowledge the work of president and past commissioners of the Preservation Commission, Historical Commission, and Landscape Advisory Commission. I'd also like to acknowledge the work of trustee Aberdeen Marshazga, who's, this has been a pet project of hers. And Aberdeen, is there anything you'd like to add?
The only thing that I would like to add is that it's a great honor to have this boundary extension and recognition of the entire village. The Landscape Advisory Commission, to which I am a liaison, is taking a special look at this new area in the coming year to ensure its consistency with the other planting areas within the rest of the village. And I think, you know, having the protection of the National Landmark Designation, which carries with it a higher level of scrutiny for any federal projects that come through as to their impacts and effects on the area, is going to be a great protection and benefit to all of Riverside.
Thank you. And Chairperson of our Landscape Advisory Commission is here, Lisa Lambros. Thank you for attending. Anything you would like to add?
No, it was just a great honor to be asked, you know, to help the village to get this designation, very important.
Thank you. Yes, I agree, and it's, being a landmark village is a big part of who we are, and I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the fact that we are, have been a landscape, landmark for, since 1970, and we've confirmed that with our new boundaries. So thanks all who were involved in that effort. I'd also like to just bring some information to the public. We are all aware that border states in our country have been transporting migrant asylum seekers to various communities throughout Illinois, as well as other regions of the country. The Village of Riverside, particularly our village manager and Public Safety Director, Matt Buckley, have been working closely with the state of Illinois, the city of Chicago, and Cook County's Department of Emergency Management and Regional Security, so that we are prepared to fulfill our responsibilities in this crisis. The village's goal is to ensure that those seeking asylum safely reach a place where their request for asylum may be addressed. The state of Illinois, in coordination with the city of Chicago, has designated a landing zone within the city of Chicago that will provide resources and support for asylum seekers. Should asylum seekers arrive in Riverside, our public safety personnel will work with designated representatives from Cook County and the city of Chicago as we assist them to the designated landing zone. The Village of Riverside administration and public safety personnel will continue to work closely with those other entities to ensure a coordinated approach to facilitate transportation to the landing zone for asylum seekers. So thank you. Again, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention because there's been a lot of chatter about this issue on social media and in the traditional media. I also wanted to acknowledge that tonight we have Senator Mike Porfirio here tonight. I met with Senator Porfirio before the meeting to go over concerns of the Village of Riverside, and I thank him for his support of the village and his attendance at tonight's meeting. Senator, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, trustees. Thanks for your service. Of course. Of course. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to the trustees. Thanks for your service, all you do for Riverside. It's an honor to serve Riverside in the state senate. I wish you all a Happy New Year, and I have some homework from the village president, and we'll be back with some updates, but biggest thing is, I always try to make sure we're bringing back good investment back into our community from the state budget, able to address some of the concerns, bringing, again, bringing the taxpayer money back to working families. So thank you all, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Senator. Also, I would like to just remind everyone of upcoming village meetings. On January 8th, the sesquicentennial planning committee will meet here at the village hall. On the normally scheduled January 8th Riverside TV meeting has been canceled. January 9th, the Landscape Advisory Commission is meeting. January 10th, the Economic Development Commission, and January 11th, Police Pension Committee is meeting. All those meetings are here at the village hall, correct?
Um, yes.
Yes. So, you can also follow our eflash for weekly notices of upcoming meetings. And that concludes my president's report, manager's report, manager Francis.
I do not have a report this evening.
Thank you. Resident comments on non-agenda items. Are there any residents who would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda, knowing that any item on the agenda, you'll have the opportunity to address as we discuss those items? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Clerk Soul, would you please read the consent agenda?
Ratify voucher list of bills, December 21st, 2023. Approve voucher list of bills, January 4th, 2024. Approve Village Board of Trustees regular meeting minutes, December 7th, 2023. Approve Village Board of Trustees executive session meeting minutes, December 7th, 2023. Review and file department monthly reports, finance department, October 2023, police and fire department, October 2023, fire and public works departments, November 2023, and community development, December 2023. Review and file board and commission minutes, transit oriented development supportive zoning code update steering committee, February 14th, 2022, preservation commission special meeting, January 23rd, 2023, Riverside TV commission regular meeting, August 14th, 2023, preservation commission regular meeting, October 12th, 2023, historical commission regular meeting, October 16th, 2023, board of police and fire commissioners regular meeting, October 18th, 2023, and preservation commission special meeting, November 1st, 2023. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2023. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into various purchase orders for fiscal year 2024. A resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with Bluestone Environmental for a notic seed amount of $48,500 for the removal of asbestos floor tiles and mastic on the second floor of the village-owned facility located at 45 Riverside Road. And a resolution waiving the competitive bid process and authorizing the village manager to enter into contracts with Comcast for the village's telephone service, fiber service, and one-point-point circuit.
Thank you, Clerk Soul. Do any of these items need to be removed? Anyone from the public or on the board may request removal of any item for further discussion? If not, could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Galagos, second by trustee Marshazga. Any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marshazga.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Galagos.
Aye.
Motion, consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on to department board and commission reports. Are there any reports from departments, boards, or commissions this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to pending business. First item under pending business is update on village board strategic goals for 2024. Back in, I believe it's probably October, I had asked, manager Francis and I had asked the, or village staff had provided the goals and objectives for all the various departments and commissions and commissions, and those were made part of our annual budget document. In response to that, I had asked the trustees to look at those goals and to consider those as well as any other goals that you felt were appropriate for the board to establish as overall village board goals for calendar year 2024. Got feedback from everybody. We consolidated that into a single document that's been reviewed. It is, the consolidation of those were included in the form of a survey in your, in the agenda packet for trustees to look at, as well as the public. Last time we discussed this, it was suggested that we survey the public, and so that is why we've put this in the form of a draft survey. And that survey categorizes our goals into basically four or five different categories. One is beautification, infrastructure, economic development, flood wall, parks and recreation. But then there are specific questions, goals, that were listed by trustees that we hope to get feedback from the public on, and those have been provided to the trustees. If you would like staff to go through those individually, that's fine, we can do that. Or if you just want to go directly to questions and discussion, that's fine too. So whatever your preference is on how we proceed with discussion. Trustee Evans.
Do you want to talk about the survey?
Sure. Yes.
I think it's excellent. It asks, you know, pretty specific questions related to the strategic goals that we compiled, and I think a lot of the questions are very relevant to life in Riverside. I like that we asked them to pick, you know, rank the three, or two, or whatever on the page, rank their preferences, and it covers a lot of, it covers the main aspects of the village. So it would be parks and rec, infrastructure improvements, like along Harlem, streetscape, couple other things, but it covers the main components of the village. I think you did a good job, whoever did this.
It was a collaboration of staff and myself. Other comments, questions? I know there was one comment regarding, a question at the end that's more open-ended. I think that's a very good suggestion. Trustee Clarity had brought that up, and I think we can add an additional question that allows residents to just, whatever's on their mind, if there's something that we didn't include, we can add that to the, to the end of the survey so people can, aren't restricted by what's in front of them. Any other comments or questions or suggestions?
Compliments to the staff. It was a great time.
Yes. Good. We, go ahead.
What is the plan for communicating and distributing the survey? And do we have goals for the response rate?
So the board can certainly provide us what, what the targets are. Obviously, we've seen kind of the feedback based on the C4 surveys, so we can do some benchmarking based on that of what's reasonable for feedback. There was feedback from other board members that we keep it up longer than a week or two just because timing of the year and things of that sort. So I wouldn't expect to bring this item back to the board till probably March, just to give us time to have it out there for at least a month, get the data back, synthesize it, and then provide that feedback back to the board.
We could also do it a different way where we have a target response rate. Maybe, you know, 30% is the standard in research. If they get 30% back in a survey, that's considered a good response rate. There might be other research on what a solid response rate is, but whatever it is, we could just keep communicating, not forever, but just try to achieve that response rate.
And we can also get some feedback from Barry Dunn, who we're actually working with for the Parks and Rec survey and things of that sort, because they obviously look for, in totality, a good sampling. I think 30% might be a little high, and I'm, it's escaping me at the moment, what they're saying, the, what the percentage is. We'll pull that, and we can also kind of work with them to just get an idea of different outreach and plan of action. Some of the things that they were talking about as part of the Parks and Rec survey, which is separate and distinct, but was talking about engagement at different events. Obviously, this time of the year doesn't lend itself, so we will certainly be sharing it on social, on all of our different media channels, and then maybe also reaching out to other organizations within the village that we work collaboratively with and asking them if they'll, they'll share the survey link to see if we can get some good, well-rounded data.
Sounds good. Okay. I think it'd be great, I mean, to share it with our commissions, to share it with the other affinity groups in town, certainly the chamber, any group that has members, right? I think, I would love to get a 30% response rate. I think that would be amazing, and it's probably a little hard to achieve, but like, let's, people get survey fatigue, they don't necessarily want to fill it out, but I do think that this is a great process, and it's a really important feedback, and so the more we can do, and let us know how we can help trying to get that out there.
So just to clarify, are we talking about 30% households?
Yeah. I don't know. Whatever you want to, whatever they say is best practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, trustee, so I would suggest, though, that given the timing of all this, that that certainly is appropriate to have that type of a goal, but I think, one way or another, I would like to see us adopt something at that first meeting in March. These are 2024 goals. We're kind of behind schedule, got started late on this. This is really something we probably ideally would have been doing summer or fall of '23, so we hit the road running in '24, but this is where we're at, so let's do all those efforts. I suggest we do all those efforts. Great idea to reach out to chambers and other groups like that, because I would expect that we will get feedback from them. And then, no later than the first meeting in March, I would like to have this back in final form for the board to look at, at that first March meeting. And maybe we can send drafts ahead of time if we get enough feedback.
Can we just maybe get an update on what the response rate is at our next couple of meetings? I agree, I also want to move forward with the process, but if we're not getting, I view this as really critical feedback, clearly, if we just only have six respondents, I don't want to pressure staff to spend a lot of time synthesizing data that's not really relevant.
If I may. With regard to the survey itself, if we're trying to get, Barry Dunn, as part of our discussions with them, talked about making sure that we're getting a good sample. And so do we want to add in questions related to demographic data? Because right now, it's, we don't know what that sampling is, right? And so that's, that's the other question.
It's always nice to have that for internal purposes, if it's not going to take a lot of time to add them. It's always good to see who we're reaching.
Okay.
If not, well, I think staff has the direction they need. I certainly feel I do, and we will proceed as directed. Next, under pending business, is an ordinance to provide for non-participation by the Village of Riverside in certain assessment relief provided by the property tax code for historic buildings and for certain residence structures located within Riverside Landscape Architectural District. This is a item we consider every January, basically, so I'll let manager Francis explain that.
Assistant village manager Monroe.
Assistant village manager Monroe.
I am here. Good evening. So as you had touched on, this property tax assessment freeze program, we do have to opt out of the program by ordinance. Essentially, in summary, the program extends for 12 years. The first eight years, any historic properties that would do some type of preservation and enhancements to the property would have their property taxes frozen for a period of eight years, and then over the next four years in equal increments would have it return to the post-improvement value of the home. So I do know, just as a note, the Preservation Commission created a work plan for 2024, including this as something that they would like to address the board on further. It's been discussed, kind of been passing in past years, but I think they'd like to try again this year in discussing this further with you. So I just wanted to let you know it's coming, and we can hopefully have that discussion before the upcoming budget in 2025 already.
Questions, comments from the trustees?
Just to clarify, is not any work that's done on a historic property? It has to be a substantial rehabilitation, which is a hefty burden, both financially and in terms of the, you know, homeowner angst involved, and the documentation that has to be provided to the state of Illinois. So it is not a situation where necessarily you are giving away wholesale, you know, tax freezes to the majority of our homeowners. It's, it has, there's a balance with the improvement of the building stock in a significant manner. So I, for one, am very much looking forward to the Preservation Commission's analysis on this, but I understand that we have had a past practice of opting out. So until we receive that presentation, I may also be inclined to follow suit with that.
Any other trustees?
So the tax breaks would be only for those homeowners that do a significant amount of work in the building?
There's an application process, yes.
It's not automatic.
No, it is not automatic. You have, it has to be related to the livability standards, so if it's, you know, exterior improvements that relate to water sealing or something of that nature, then it would be a qualified expense. There's a definition, a formal definition of qualified expenses. And that has to meet a financial threshold that is considered to be a substantial rehabilitation, a certain percentage of the property's equalized assessed value. So once that application is improved, approved, and then the work is done and the receipts are submitted, then and only then, does the homeowner receive the tax breaks for that period of time?
Who approves the application?
It's the state historic preservation office.
Thank you.
Trustee Clarity.
I'll echo trustee Marshazga that I would be interested in seeing the presentation that will be forthcoming, but that, consistent with my views on this in the past, that I think we have a lot of homes in town that could participate in a program like this, and I'm not sure we're necessarily prepared for what a tremendous amount of adoption might mean for us. I also am troubled by the optics of, and correct me if my assumptions are wrong, but it sounds like the repairs have to be really significant, so a homeowner has to have the financial capabilities of doing that. And so it, just at its face value, the optics of giving wealthier residents a tax break don't sit well with me, and I understand the laudable goals of the program, but I, as I said, it's a pretty big hill to climb.
So I suppose the argument for, for it, for the agreeing or approving the assessment or the break would be they're making an investment in our, some of our more precious homes in the village. So like, we would support people who are contributing and maintaining those homes, I guess.
That doesn't have to be a specific, right, like, historical, or, it doesn't have to be a landmarked home, right? Like, do we have any sense for how many of our homes in our stock? What percentage of our homes would qualify for the program if the project were undertaken?
We have, I believe, just over 70 landmarked properties, so I couldn't say what percentage at any given year would opt to do this level of improvement to the property. As trustee Marshazga said, it does need to be a significant portion of the livable area of the home that needs the improvement. And so, you know, we see either non-landmark properties or, you know, or conventional, you know, residential properties. There's not that many that do that extensive of a remodel as it is, you know, a handful every year. And so despite needing to probably, you know, to wait and see what Preservation Commission would recommend or identify as, as opportunities for something like this, you know, as it stands right now, we see only a few properties a year that do that extensive of a remodel.
And just to further follow up on trustee Evans' inquiry, another aspect of the reasoning for this program is the greater burden that landmark and historic homes carry financially, because you can't just repair the roof as you would on a standard home in most instances. There's, you know, an extra level of work and restoration and cost involved in that. There's a premium. You know, a lot of contractors see landmark, and, you know, there is that extra level of expense involved, and to recognize the significant, you know, investment that these property owners are, would be making in keeping their homes, you know, in good condition and, you know, as additional assets for the village. That's the reasoning for it. There's a lot of communities, including Oak Park, that actually are opted into this program. So, you know, it's, it will be interesting to see what they say, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but I just wanted to make that.
So I think, you know, the way I've always looked at this, having been a trustee for a number of years and dealing with this every, every year, it's a trustee for a number of years and dealing with this every, every year, it's, you know, the way the property taxes are structured in Illinois, when someone's property tax gets frozen, that means every other property is subsidizing that property. So the question to, I always ask myself is, well, so I'm going to subsidize, using that word very loosely, um, but are my property values increased because of the historic structures and the investment? Are my property out, values benefited from that? Yeah, they are, no question about it. So that's the balance is, you know, do you, you know, and it's not a, you know, it's not like my property taxes are going to go up by a hundred dollars because, uh, because we, we've adopted this program. It's probably more like a penny or less per property, but, but that's kind of the balance. It's the balance of, uh, how the historic properties benefit the entire community? And does the community, is it in the public interest for the community to subsidize that in order to preserve and maintain property values for the entire village? So, so it sounds like to me that we want to go ahead and adopt this ordinance for now, for this year, but then Historic Preservation is going to look at it some more, and we'll come back next year again, and we'll revisit it and, and have a fresh report from Historic Preservation and see where we're at. Agreed?
Agreed.
So is there a motion to approve the ordinance as presented? Second?
I'll second.
Second, motion by, uh, Trustee Mateo, second by Trustee Evans. Any discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Clerk Sol.
Trustee Marsha Agoska?
Aye.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, new business, um, an ordinance of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, amending procedures relating to towing and impounding of vehicles. Director Buckley?
Good evening, President Pollock, members of the Village Board and Village Manager Francis. So over the past few months, I've met with Village Manager Francis, as well as Attorney Pickrell, to discuss something that's been occurring that we've seen an increase here in Riverside, and that is the fleeing and eluding of vehicles, as well as reckless driving on our streets. Through our discussions, uh, we started looking into ways we could increase our administrative, uh, tow fees for those types of vehicles that, uh, actually flee and elude our officers. Um, according to state statute, we're allowed to do that. And what I did is put together with Village Manager Francis some numbers of what it actually costs the village to actually go and try to find these offenders and either issue them citations or arrest them and tow their vehicle if it was involved, used in this crime. A lot of times we don't find the driver right away. We'll find the vehicle parked somewhere in a parking lot or at their house on the street, and the vehicle will be towed back here to our impound lot. Going back a little bit, what happens is when an officer goes to pull over a vehicle and it takes off on them, or doesn't even bother stopping and just flees, due to our great camera systems that we now have in our vehicles, as well as different camera systems, not only in Riverside, but in other towns that we utilize with license plate readers and things like that, we're able to identify these vehicles with their license plates. We're then able to go and look for these vehicles, um, to find them and bring them back here and hold them accountable for fleeing and eluding the police. Obviously, this is something that's very dangerous, that's been occurring not only here in Riverside, but, um, throughout our area. And it's not only dangerous for the officers that are going after these vehicles, but it's dangerous for the community, as well as the other motorists that are on the street. So as we started looking at this and the amount of money it costs for the officers to come back to the station, start working and do investigative work on this with our detectives, uh, to try to locate these vehicles, um, we found that it's pretty expensive, and it does add up very quickly with overtime and staff time to do this. So working with Attorney Pickrell, we were able to amend, um, the procedures related to our towing and impounding of vehicle ordinance and increase the administrative fees from $500, which are currently, um, in place, to $1,500, uh, for any vehicle that flees and eludes the police. With that being said, there is a new state law out there, um, that says that we cannot implement these fines on vehicles that are stolen. So if a vehicle is stolen and that vehicle flees and eludes the police, we cannot impose these fines on the vehicle owner, just like they can't get red light ticket fines and toll way fines, things like that, because they weren't driving the vehicle, it was stolen. So, uh, we understand that part of it, because many of these vehicles are stolen vehicles. Um, but we do, and we have been very successful in locating vehicles that have fled and eluded our officers and have driven recklessly on our streets. So with that, um, we did review the ordinance. Uh, Attorney Pickrell did make some, uh, changes to it and cleaned it up a little bit. Um, and you have a copy of the ordinance with you, with his, uh, strike throughs. And, um, at that time, um, if there's any questions for myself or Attorney Pickrell, we can answer those.
Any questions for, uh, Chief Buckley or Attorney Pickrell on the ordinance? Any discussion, comments, Trustee Evans?
So it looks like if you're arrested for prostitution, they take your car?
Yes. But we can't.
Use the vehicle in the commission.
Yes.
You can, if you're arrested for prostitution, you can go to your house or tow your car. You have to be, the, the car should be integral to the crime, uh, that you're committing.
So if she's, he or she is in the car with the John, the John gets the fee?
Depends on where's the car, yeah.
I mean, there's a big, bigger discussion that we could have about prostitution and, you know, trafficking, but I won't start it today.
Who would imagine that these, uh, officers have a large amount of discretion when enforcing uh, these laws? And if the circumstances present itself to the officer, they did not want to impound a car, tow it, or for whatever reason, they are not bound to do that.
Okay, yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, uh, anyone like to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make some motion.
Second? Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second by Trustee Mateo. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Sol, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsha Agoska? Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion's approved. A resolution revising village policy, revising policy for village sponsorship, uh, or support of special events. Attorney Pickrell?
Yes, uh, as an initial matter, you have a policy that's been handed out to you. There's been a slight revision to what was circulated earlier. All this does is clarify that the village clerk, not the village manager, will be the initial person to approve or disprove of an application. The policy you have for you governs the use of public lands for what we're terming, uh, winter displays. Winter displays are, uh, displays that celebrate the winter season or any holiday associated with the winter season for a specific time period, December 1st through January 14th. It also provides procedures for how those, uh, applications be processed and establishes a set of standards for how they will be evaluated and says that these, uh, and designates a piece of land on which those displays may be located. Uh, since the land is finite, uh, it'll be on a first come, first served basis, and there is a size limitation for each display. So I think the obvious question is, why are we doing this? We're doing this because, uh, there's been an increased interest in locating religious displays on public property within the village. Most recently, we got a request for a menorah, which we processed. Um, the village has traditionally addressed these on an ad hoc basis. You know, we didn't have a policy, and so the rules governing these applications are that you basically have to treat them like anything else. That's the first rule. The second rule is you can't get overly intertwined with religion. You can't support any particular religion over another. You can't discriminate against any religion, and you can't discriminate against religions generally. Now, stated as sentences, they're pretty easy to understand, but when evaluating a specific application for a specific location, it's, it's difficult. Uh, it's even difficult to ascertain, is this religious? Uh, that's a question that Illinois courts have struggled with, uh, what is and what is not religious. Uh, and this has proved difficult for village staff to handle, and one of the solutions we proposed was to have a, a policy governing this issue, and that's what this does. Uh, this, what it does is it says, yes, we will permit these on public property. We're going to provide you a spot, and it's going to provide a neutral, a viewpoint neutral way of evaluating those types of applications. It also says that since the definition of a winter display is winter season and any, you know, really it's anything related to the winter season, and the fact that it celebrates a particular holiday located in that period of time, uh, is not a disqualifier. So the person who evaluates it doesn't need to decide whether this is or this isn't religious. They just decide, is it celebrate the winter season in some way? I have no doubt there are going to be a number of concerns about this policy. I share those concerns. They are concerns that many communities deal with. The, the reason, you know, you, there are really two choices for how you proceed on this. I mean, we, we can't stop these requests from coming in, and we need to treat them fairly. And so the decision can either be made by the Village Board in expressing how these should be handled, or the, the alternative is that they just have to be handled by staff in consultation with my office and to make sure that it's handled fairly. And one of the problems with handling it on an ad hoc basis is that necessarily there will be, uh, at least maybe the appearance of differential or treatment from one, you know, depending on who gets the application, the timing, whenever, one application may be viewed as being treated differently than another, and then with differential treatment, there may be the erroneous belief that something is being favored or disfavored, and that's just not our, our intent. Our intent is to be fair, viewpoint neutral, and treat these applications just like anything else. And so that's what, uh, those myriad concerns, that's what this policy attempts to, to do. Now, this is a matter for the Village Board to decide. We, I, I, you know, I, with consultation with village staff, and we put this together to try to best express, we think is the intent of the village, but if you have concerns about it, um, if you, uh, I'm here to discuss it, and this, you know, but things better done right than fast, so just, we can, this is something that, uh, the Village Board, uh, can reject wholesale or adjust or whatever. Uh, but what I think that this does is it takes the various concerns associated with, um, requests for locating religious displays, memorialize it in a, an expression of policy by the village, and it relieves village staff of having to make these decisions on an ad hoc basis. So if there's, I am open to any questions about the policy that you may have, or any concerns generally about, uh, what's going on related to this issue?
Trustee?
Perhaps I'm missing it, but, um, uh, is there only to be one winter display at a time in the designated, um, plot of land?
No, there, there is a, uh, the, each applicant is limited to one application per calendar year, but then also we will, it's on a first come, first served basis. So there is a size limitation, um, in section C, six feet wide by two feet deep, and then we will fill that area, uh, until, uh, until the area is full, and then at that point we will cease accepting applications.
And how, how big is the, um, designated area to the, um, side of the train station, to the east side of the train station?
Do you know the answer, that, uh, attorney of village staff on that one?
So the understanding is it is on the east side of the train station, which is a planter bed. I think we're all aware of that. Um, there is a location in the easternmost portion of the planter bed that has an outlet, which, I'm assuming lighting would be involved. We could probably put two six foot wide by two foot deep installations there, signage, uh, whatever it might be, but it's not unlimited. You know, there's, it is a planter bed at the end of the day, and we don't want to be sticking a bunch of stuff in, stuff that we paid to install, so.
Right. And then assume somebody uses the maximum amount, that's, that's, that's the maximum square footage. If somebody wanted to make smaller, they'd have way more.
Ten feet wide, ten, twelve feet wide.
Good.
That does not have material planted there.
So if the display were smaller than six feet, you know, you could fit more than two displays?
Yeah, that was just the maximum size that we would consider.
Right, two, three foot wide, we could put two there, you know, the maximum's six feet wide, um, trying to work with the space we have available.
And, yeah, and that's one of the inherent limitations, is whenever you get one of these requests, it's, you know, necessarily you'll get more requests to put in a similar location, and any particular location you choose is going to be limited in some fashion.
I do have another question. In section C five, um, it states, as a condition of approval, each winter display must include a sign located in front of the display identifying the applicant and organization, blah, blah, blah. Sufficient size and clarity to be legible from the sidewalk. Um, do we need to specify, um, that the applicant is responsible for the sign? And do we need to place any limitations on the size of the sign, given that there could be more than two displays at one time?
I could certainly add those, uh, requirements if, uh, if that's.
It, it might be a good idea to put some sort of limits on the size of the sign. You don't want a six foot long sign, and I, I just, I, I'm just trying to see how, I, I see a lot of potential ambiguity, but maybe it's not going to be a big deal, so. But better safe than sorry, right?
Yeah, no, and, and I'll tell you, in, in drafting this, you inevitably, I went through a series of hypotheticals, and I know, uh, members of the Village Board post hypotheticals to me or email, um, that's a good process to go through. It's something that helps us, we're, the whole point of this is to anticipate concerns that haven't come up yet, and so I will, uh, we can certainly make that, that adjustment if that's what the Village Board wants.
Trustee Clarity?
Two questions. The planter bed on the west side is bigger?
It is.
Did we not consider, is there a reason we wouldn't consider a little bit more space?
We're trying to find an open area that did not have plants or bushes or under, you know, brochures, whatever it might be, we all want it necessarily affect or put opposed to secure the sign, because my understanding is we're not going to be allowing stakes driven in, it has to be a platform mounted, the sign, is that the intent? We should discuss that, because there's a lot of wiring and stuff adjacent to the train station. So I was under the impression that there would be a flat foot or some kind of stand assigned to be fixed to it.
As I think stand, the policy only says it has to be secured to the ground in a stable way. It doesn't say anything particular about not putting, drilling something into the ground. But it also says that any installation has to be reviewed by village staff for safety concerns, so I suppose it would be within the ambit of.
Yeah, there's a, that area adjacent to the train, train station on either side has a bunch of, uh, um, communication, electrical wires, possibly gas. I know there's a gas meter on the east side, so, uh, anytime anything gets put into the ground, Julie would have to be contacted, and that area located prior to the installation. So if, uh, something were to be installed that had a, uh, either a base or a foot to it that was secured with either a sandbag or something behind it, that would alleviate having to, um, for one called Julie, but also disturb any infrastructure in proximity.
So I lied, I actually have three questions, that was one. The second is, it, am I correct in understanding that we chose this location, at least in part, because it could be monitored by the village?
That's correct.
For safety, for, to, to reduce defacement? Correct, okay, great. And then my, last of my many questions says that an application for a winter display has to be made at least 30 days in advance of one they want, when the applicant would like the display to be displayed, right? And I'm, I'm looking at timelines, right? So there's 14 days for the village clerk to have to approve, and then if it's denied, you have, the applicant has 10 business days, and then the village has 30 days to make a decision on appeal. So I'm, it's a long walk here to my question, which is, is there anything stopping anyone from making their application in July to make sure that they have enough time?
No, the staff reviews the special event applications as they come in. Um, we, we don't start reviewing them a year in advance, because obviously a lot of things can happen. Typically, we will get them a few months, depending on what type of special event it is and how much it needs to be vetted with department heads, myself and Clerk Sol. So, but, but typically- So, but, but typically, as we receive them, we, we begin our review and provide feedback.
I, I ask because we've set up a dyn, by the way, I'm, I'm in support of, you know, trying to find a solution to a complicated problem that respects people's desires for various winter displays in a, in a very equitable fashion, which is why I'm asking about the bigger planter bed, just so that we're not keeping anybody's winter display out for size. That was the purpose of that question. But we've set up a dynamic here where we have a scarce resource, a small planter bed that can maybe fit two. We've said, come on a first, you get it on a first come, first served basis. You have to have it 30 days in advance. People start thinking about this during the holiday season, and so if it's, you know, Thanksgiving, and they start putting in a winter display application, the timeline is a little compressed. So I don't know that I have a particular action item for that, only just to make sure you've considered, want to try to be as equitable as possible, give people an opportunity to abide by our new ordinance and still have their winter displays, but not create a situation where people are necessarily flocking to you in June when you're not prepared for that.
So typically, if, if we get something in, with less than 30 days, we still try to mobilize staff, review it, and get approvals and feedback. So the one in question, we did not get within the 30-day timeframe, and so we still attempt to do everything that we can to review, get that feedback, and get approvals out if it is approved. In very rare occasions, we don't approve a special event request. I can't even think of one since I've been with the village that we have denied an application. Usually, applications are adjusted based on the request and what can be accommodated and what they're looking at doing, if there's a public safety piece and things of that sort, but typically, we try to work in tandem with the individual. The individual that had made the request for this year is aware of the timeframe, and so there has been that notice as well, even though we were able to accommodate the review in a short turnaround time this year, in 2023.
Yeah. The staff is nothing but diligent on these and actioning these, and I appreciate that. I also just hope to avoid a situ, I don't want to overstate people's desires for winter displays here, but I would also like to avoid a situation where someone comes in November 1st with a legitimate application for a winter display, and all the, the two spaces that you've allotted in your east side planter bed have been allocated since April. Good luck.
So how long are they usually going to be?
A week?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. I have, I have another question.
That's all mine for now.
Okay, so can we go back to the stakes? Because I think a lot of people will want to use stakes to secure their displays. So how far down, how much dirt is above the, the wires and everything that you're talking about?
I, I don't know. It varies.
I think it creates a barrier if we're not going to let them have stakes.
I wouldn't put stakes there.
So you suggest, I, I know you suggested sandbags.
I would put a weighted base or a stand.
And we can, we can, right now, it just says properly affixed to the ground and leaves it to the particular location of whatever's underneath, and there's village staff and is going to inspect whatever is proposed and discuss how it's adhered to the ground, but we can add here some sort of caution about not disturbing underground infrastructure. You know, you know, people obviously try to secure it to the ground in a manner that disturbs or damages underground wiring or infrastructure.
It would be nice if we knew how far down they could go.
Yeah, it varies. You know, we've seen, we've seen gas lines installed 18 inches below grade, we've seen them installed six inches below grade. Communications typically will run shallower than that, six to 12 inches. Electric is usually 18 to 48, depending if it's bored or entrenched. So it runs the gamut as far as depth, but, you know, we're now responsible for locating that type of infrastructure. Julie comes out, which is a contractor for Nightcore, Comet, Comcast, and they do the locating of that.
I think having it all above grade just simplifies it.
So probably fixed above grade?
Additional comments, questions?
I do. Do we have to allow overtly religious displays?
Yes. Well, we have to treat those, those overtly religious displays the same as we would any other application, and the fact that it's overtly religious is something that we cannot, is not a basis for, we cannot use that to deny the, the application.
That's state law.
Correct. It's the constitution. Yeah, that's the.
Because that red mundeline says that they can't, they won't display menorahs, nativity scenes, or even Christmas trees. So are they?
I think that's an ill-advised policy.
Okay. Do we want to treat this similar to the banners that requesters need to either live here or have an, an organization related to Riverside?
Can we do that?
Yes. Yeah, so when we create a limited public forum, we can establish the scope of the topic, not the viewpoint, the topic, and you can limit it to the speakers, to interested parties, and, you know, similar, that if we're talking about a zoning application, you're going to have neighbors come in, be kind of, some unrelated person talking about an unrelated subject. So yes, we can limit it to, I think, you know, however you want to limit it, Riverside residents or organizations located within.
It sounds like we have language already that we could borrow from special events applications.
Yeah.
The banner, policy.
Yeah, the banner policy, yeah.
That would be my preference. So what if somebody wants to do a spring display? My point is, we're focusing on winter for obvious reasons, but I guess we might anticipate that this could expand beyond winters? Exactly.
Yeah, this policy would not allow that. Do you want to expand it? I mean, one of the, one of the things to consider here is our, our greatest ability to control what goes on there is how we define the topic. And we've defined it, winter celebrations and related holidays. If you expand that scope to, say, winter and spring, seasonal, this is that, anything that falls within that definition is fair game, and we cannot discriminate upon the viewpoint. So it is, although I cannot say, I, I know all, every single winter holiday, other ones that I was previously unaware of or recently pointed out to me, the more you expand the scope, the less you're able to control what is said, and the more, you may get additional displays that is, that are outside of the types of displays that we were hoping to have there. So you'd just be very, if we were to expand it, we just have to be very thoughtful about what we do to expand it.
Well, we can see what the interest is in winter, because people also have to have insurance, and not everybody is going to be, want to do that, so we'll see how it goes next December.
Any other questions or comments from trustees?
I guess I'm just confused. What happens, following trustee Mateo's line of thinking here? Under what rubric would we judge a request in July to post in August a display that says Jesus is the reason for the season, or a menorah, or something, right? Like what, 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 this, the winter display policy doesn't apply.
Right.
So what does apply at that time?
That would be our prior ad hoc, you know, and then, you know, the, the village, generally speaking, does not, it does, does not allow a lot of displays on public property. There's some artwork, I think, during the summertime, and when, so you, you begin with the general assumption that it is not allowed, and then you can create exceptions to that. When you create exceptions for the, you know, this artwork or this seasonal displays, you then create a limited public forum for those types of things.
I got it.
And so I would say if somebody asked, you know, Jesus is the reason for the season, consistent with practices in the past of, of allowing other types of displays on public property, we could not use the fact that it's religious to deny that application.
But we could deny it if we would deny other art installations similarly.
Yes.
I got it. That makes sense to me, that it's largely a prohibition, but for the exception that we've created here.
Exactly. And, yeah, and, and public forums can be created through, you know, overt action, like what we're doing here, or can just sort of be, we approve a, you know, we approve a pol, a, a, a display here and a display there, and suddenly, people gain that expectation, and then by operation of law, it has become a public, a limited public forum. I would say also that if, you know, let's say, village staff just start allowing anything and approving anything for this winter display area, that limited public forum would become a traditional public forum suddenly, and then we would lose our ability to, to regulate. So this is why you follow the policy. That's my suggestion.
Anything else? I, I have one question. Do we define winter season?
Yes, winter is December 1st through January 14th.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, trustees? If not, I think that we, I would like to see this come back to us.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that. There's enough added here, I'd like to do a second.
And from my notes, and, and just to summarize where we're at, we want, the changes would include that, that the, the mounting or the stabilization would be weighted, not anything drilled into the ground or pounded into the ground. That it be restricted to local residents or organizations as defined currently in our banner policy, that the size of the sign identifying the sponsor be specified. And one other thing that I just made a note of, it's inconsequential, but just for clarification, in C3, we say, if a connection to village power is available, well, if we do this location, we know it's available, so we might as well phrase that differently, so, since we know it's available.
What if it's already taken up by the other display? Is that a possibility?
That's a good point.
Yeah, so maybe it was available for the first one, but not the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Just one item, that the applicant is responsible for providing the sign at their boss.
Would you, I don't know if it's in here, whether the sign that we are designating the size of is part of the six by two feet limitation, so if you have, if you decide to, if you decide to maximize your sign size, that'll all be counted as part of that six by two foot limit? Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Got it. Any further direction from the board?
Quick question. So if a family wanted to put a display up, then that's not allowed? It has to be an organization?
A resident or organization. Right.
Thank you.
And they would have to follow the, so even if a resident came in, they would have to provide the required insurance for the display.
There being no, oh, I should, I have not gone to the public, because there's no one here except for our reporter for the landmark and staff, but just for the record, there was, there's no public attending to participate in this discussion. So we will move on to trustee reports. We have our monthly cross-community climate collaborative update. Trustee Marsha Aska.
Okay, well, the team last month received feedback from a number of the key stakeholders who could be potential implementers of a climate action and resilience plan for our community. Our team has yet to meet to discuss that feedback, but we are going to have a Zoom meeting on Tuesday, the 9th to do so. At that meeting, it is very likely that we will, you know, discuss the angle and route that we will take to polish and improve the, basically, the framework for the plan prior to presenting it to the public. It is our hope that we will be able to have a public engagement event surrounding these initiatives and get additional public feedback, hopefully by the end of this month. We're looking at January 25th date. That'll be exactly one year from when we started the public engagement process with the road to 2050. So, you know, the team has worked very hard, staff has worked very hard, and we've made tremendous progress, and I think, you know, it's, it's all coming together very, very nicely, and we invite more people to come and check it out, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other trustee reports this evening? Seeing none, the board does not have need for an executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved? Seconded.
Motion by trustee Mateo, seconded by trustee Gallagos. Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
Trustee Marsha Aska.
Aye.
Trustee Mateo.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Motion approved, we're adjourned at 8:06.